Whoa.
Alright, I need to play already guys.
It's here. They're sucking my fucking ass down.
Think you know what I'm doing?
Fuck everybody else.
Hi Chris.
Hello Doug.
How are you?
Are your muscles sore?
It was more the sunburn than anything.
Oh, see ya.
Can I use your top?
Yeah. I'm turning it a little.
Can we get a third CD?
Yes sir.
Alright, I'll be here by call as meeting is ordered. Okay.
Sheriff person and given.
Right.
Special video job.
Present.
Mission Palm. Mission Camera Robertson.
Present.
And this Sunday. Alternate Commissioner Carl Carson Woodset.
Yep.
And alternate Commissioner Tusher.
Right.
Brian is established.
Good, and you are set our word of public comments.
Yes sir.
So next. And the agenda is. You are a commissioner, and you are a deputy commissioner. We should update our previous projections. We both.
Yes sir. Just comments on. Actually. Yes. Mission Camera Robertson.
Yes.
Mission person.
Uh, very good. Yes. Okay. Very good. Okay. Um, reports from officers and council liaison people. The only thing that I have, I just want to thank you all for showing up for training. Two weeks ago, a week ago, whatever it was, it was a long week. So, uh, thank you all, uh, for showing up. And we're gonna have a bunch more for anybody that didn't listen. Let's see. Yes. We will have one more, uh, we'll schedule it here soon. We can do it. And other than that, that's all I have. Uh, Chris. Not in your department, council. Okay, thank you very much. Um, same. Okay, very good. Needs are, uh, well, special work nothing. Does anybody else have any that belongs in that category before we belong to new business? Okay, the new business and number two executive session, special work, rental documents, and other appearing legality.
So, just procedurally, I know something repeating in that too. Why don't you gabble us out and state the provision five five one oh seven one, we're going into executive session to get question counsel.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, and then I'll feel comfortable, we turn off the camera.
I can make it.
You need to stay here.
Well, we'll leave the room because I don't want to turn off the camera because we may not be able to turn it back on.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Alright, uh, five five one oh seven one.
Five five one oh seven one, we will, uh, be in the executive council at seven oh four. Sorry, four oh four.
Hop in the other room.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay.
He has some crazy. Okay. I think he's rolled up. Watch for your head in there today. Oh boy, we need to check your nose. Oh, sorry. See that? Down here, there's, uh, two of them. Sound shot, let's see the wall.
Did anyone hear that? Or?
There is that?
Yeah, it does, right, it's nice, close the door and.
I think that's where she went. I just said, yeah. Give her a sheet.
Um, one of the record product. One of the things of the record product was that volunteers do chainsaws.
They need to work.
That's just that, and if the whole day time.
That's a good idea.
They're, they're, they're doing wrong, they were considered.
Mm-hmm.
So that means.
I was talking to you, um, talking to your partner on all my, the meetings. Um, yesterday, the last class, I think. Official. Okay. The patient, however. Um, I have a reason to quit that because when I got, when I get my sword. Video. Um, it looks like you can see notification that says you're recruiting. This year, and, and then ours come through that recruit yet. And if you don't have your email expanded to see two months, then you will never know. So, or when people change, but at least they'll be able to see part of. If you do have your email expanded to my, uh, official. For change.
I'll wait till.
It's obvious. But, good news, I had two additional people sign up for text alerts in the last few days.
Oh.
I go it from one eighty-two to one eighty-four. When they go out. I'm happy about that.
So that time, that somebody. The time to just.
Yeah.
That's the deal. It would only be certain.
Yeah, that's just enough. The plan is just. Some of this one. On your test today. How that computer directly connect. It's according to my board, my big championship, but I don't tell them that.
Guys, one of us have two questions in the room. About, um, you know, there's no reason that computer has to be able to.
I agree with your theory.
Alright, if you could sit right here and you have a wireless mouse. And you had to do it. That, if, if, just, uh, just a move what they would do to the camera viewers and so you might have to put like at the. At like house.
It's gonna cut out. Since in the audience now.
What about yours?
It wouldn't necessarily. Well, you can.
Okay.
No, I just wanted to see really quick.
I swear, Jim in his sofa, he can't keep his lid on.
Okay, so that's yours.
Wait, so now I can't hear it. Okay. We should get. Is it over on? Hmm. Now why is my view different? Different from yesterday?
Do you see what the camera is seeing?
No. That was yesterday. Oh my God, seriously, this is.
Is it one of these?
Like, what I just do, it's still.
Like I said. We're having sports.
Together. Oh. And what is that?
Testing, 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 hello? Hello, test. Test one, test, hello, test. Testing one-two, test one, test one. And third. That's the latter button. But this speaker anyway, so.
So. Citizen says that meeting appears to be jammed up and unresponsive.
Or maybe they're seeing.
Just because of this thing is a static screen. Oh, so they're not actually seeing anything.
They're seeing this.
They're seeing this, the empty room, basically.
Are they seeing an empty room? Asking for seeing an empty room, which is me and Jeff that make.
Yeah, I asked that question.
Okay.
But they did say that towers, they've heard that towers are down causing the internet outages.
Okay.
But wouldn't that affect the.
Here, because we're running it off portal.
Can't even get into the meeting.
Ask if they see us running around.
So here's.
Running through my server, I still have them.
They can't even get in. And that's. So this is what, where it's you.
Turn, the first issue was my port on the right of my laptop failed, my USB port. I didn't think my laptop got that much use, but it would. It's only a couple years old. It's that much. Are you done?
Yes.
Okay.
Sneaking back in.
Correct.
I think I left my agenda in there.
I think I did, George. I know, yes.
Just letting you know. We had a little bit of video difficulty, the port that I was using to record the meeting failed. So.
That's report. We were the. Sorry.
USB port.
Uh, okay, four thirty-five PM, we are back from executive session. They're ready to resume public portion. Let's review business, that concludes item number two, review business, which moves us on to item number three, discuss and take possible action on scheduling public hearing concerning proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances Land Use Regulations addressing minimum lot sizes and short-term rentals. So that item is now open, is there any discussion on that?
We need a motion to discuss.
Well, there can be general discussion.
How about a refresher from the minimum lot sizes? The last I recall, something was brought to us and then there was some sort of administrative error or something.
Yeah, I ended up going back and reviewing the ordinance review committee meeting minutes. And there were a couple of the minimum lot sizes that weren't the fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty, like the duplexes and the fourplexes. One of those is twenty-one thousand, but they were all over the fourteen thousand, I can't find it.
No, that's okay, again, my recollection was that council member Heinz brought it to us. We said, that was good, who are we to disagree? And we said, let's do it. And then it popped back up on our agenda after that, so do we need to do something else with them?
No, that was, that was the correction that needs to be made, is that they weren't all fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty square feet. There was a difference between, not the SF ones, but the other, other areas.
So we don't need to take any action.
Don't need to take any action on the minimum lot sizes themselves. Because y'all have already made a motion to pass those in support of what the ordinance review committee decided.
Right.
So y'all are, y'all don't have to do anything to approve that.
Okay. In that case, what's on the table is from our previous meeting and from this morning, or from our discussion regarding short-term rentals. So if we need to have any discussion on that, now is the time for that. Otherwise, we can accept a motion to schedule a public hearing, which would be the next step.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for our next regularly scheduled P and Z meeting on March first.
I'll second that.
Can we get the notices out one time?
That's, I was just gonna check later.
Absolutely, yeah, we can. We'll get them out by Monday. Any further discussion on that motion now that the motion has been brought up and seconded? Okay, we're ready to vote.
Can we make a presentation, so the public hearing contents, you want to include the minimum lot sizes and short-term rentals?
Uh.
Sorry.
We probably need to, right? That's a zoning change, so that needs, I mean, I think the idea was to try to hold. You can schedule the public hearings for whenever you want. I think the idea was to put out one notice in lieu of three separate notices that says on March first, we're talking about this, on March eighth, we're talking about the council. And so if P and Z wants to have a public hearing on.
I don't think we do. I don't think we do. Our, and again, my memory is somewhat faulty, but my recollection was that came to us. Our task was to either approve it or come up with something to not approve it. We approved it, and from that point it was.
Why don't you go ahead and schedule a public hearing?
I have a question. Um, so I thought when that happened and Deborah Heinz came and spoke with us, that that was, that we couldn't do it in Wood Creek City because it's already been planted. But what we're voting on is the E T JSA command, is that correct?
What would happen, may I go prior to chairman? Um, basically, all the properties in the city, within the city of Wood Creek are planted, no matter what size they are. So they will, they will get serviced no matter what because they're currently planted properties. Now, however, I'm gonna use my home as an example. There's a half acre next to me and I'm on a half acre. If I was to sell my property and somebody purchased that half acre and my half acre, knocked down my house and wanted to combine the properties.
Would it be replanted, right?
And replat it, that fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty square feet would apply at that time.
Okay.
But not right now. Is that, did I do that correctly?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
If, my sentiment is that if P and Z needs to address that with the public, we should just do it all in one public hearing. I don't, I don't think we need to hold separate public hearings to talk about that, so.
I agree. I agree.
So does somebody want to make a motion to amend that motion to say they want to include the public hearing on minimum lot sizes and short-term rentals? Or are we afraid of that?
I will make a motion that we include the minimum lot size.
You can make it as, as written.
As written here.
And just for clarity's sake, that would probably be, it'd be two separate gavels.
Right.
At, at the same hearing, at the same meeting, but they would be a separate public hearing on each, on each issue.
Okay.
Those are pretty distinct issues.
Totally.
All right, I make a motion to include minimum lot sizes in the public hearing from the previous motion.
One second.
Okay, any additional discussion now that we've clarified?
So we have to vote twice, right? Okay.
Roger, for, for future reference, instead of, is there not an easier way to be like, okay, we're gonna kind of, like, I feel like we shouldn't have to vote twice, right?
Right.
Like, we just want to make one.
To vote twice.
Yeah, we just need to make one amendment and you, you just kind of reworded it so that it matched this and made sense.
Yeah.
So we don't have to have an amendment and a second, and then, or a motion and a second, and then an amendment and a second to the amendment and two.
It just gets cloudy.
Exactly, that gets crazy, so, so we're just gonna vote once on, on, reread the, the motion on the, on the floor so everybody understands exactly what we're talking about.
Um, because the original motion wasn't specific, which is why I jumped in. It said, motion to approve the scheduling of a public hearing for the next regularly scheduled planning and zoning meeting. And it didn't say short-term rental board, which is why I.
We just want that motion to re, like it.
Can we just clarify it by adding for the code of ordering slant use recognition and short-term rentals on that? That way we don't have to do the two motions. There we go.
So I'll keep Commissioner Robertson's second for that motion.
Actually, Chris's and then mine, yeah. We don't have to vote on mine.
Okay.
I'll, I'll retract that.
Okay.
Perfect. Now we're.
Writing the floor on, okay, all right.
It's so much work, thanks for training.
Sorry. Anything I may do here? Okay, so Commissioner Tamara Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Sanye?
Hi.
Chairperson Devonport?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lady John?
Yes.
Okay, the motion was approved unanimously, that concludes our new business. Are there any announcements? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. Submit.
Perfect.
All right, four forty-two, adjourn.
Yeah, softer. So we gotta go.